All right, we're gonna start. Thank you everyone for attending today's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 19th, 2024, sorry. You'll start with a roll call. I'll note that Mr. Clucker, the Chair, is absent. As Vice Chair, I am present. Tony?
Present.
Colin?
Present.
Jason?
Present.
Thank you. First item, we will approve September 17th meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
Motion and second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I've been asked to move the planning or public comment period to the beginning of the meeting, and so we'll do that without objection. Sir?
Thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. My name's Dave Forrest. I live at 2153 West Fourth Street. And I'm here to talk about specifically the speed check, the development that went in at Cherry and 26th Street. I provide some pictures of that. Specifically, wanted to talk about that, but more broadly, wanted to talk about the subdivision and land development ordinance and where the Planning Commission, I believe, fits in in all of this. I'll tell you right at the outset, I do not like the speed check at all. I don't think it fits into the built environment that's there, which is more of a traditional town, urban, commercial environment than it is kind of a highway or suburban district. This is, this gas station is really kind of a standard cookie cutter design that you might see on a four-lane highway or something. It doesn't really fit into the built environment that's there. And among other issues, it has about five curb cuts along 26th Street. Just about all of the sidewalk is in fact curb cut, and there's, there's an avenue for car traffic to go both in and out within several feet of each other. And there's a picture of that. It has big, tall lights. You know, if I were living across the street in one of the houses, and I saw that thing lit up all night, I wouldn't like it. But this isn't really about kind of what I think and what my preferences are. To me, this is kind of a process issue. And the way I read the subdivision and land development ordinance is that this is a land development by definition, and it should be coming before the Planning Commission for you to review and approve. Under the land developments, under the SALDO, you have sole authority to do that. And I think for good reason, because you have a broader perspective on the city and the built environment than maybe the developer and, you know, the staff who approve, you know, the sewer line or the lighting or something like that. Your job is to make sure that, in my opinion, to make sure that land developments go in that are going to be harmonious, because they're going to be there for decades. And this is certainly going to be there for decades. So it's an opportunity for you representing a broader perspective to weigh in on what the built environment, future built environment and the city is going to be. And I'm, and I guess I could throw in historic preservation there, too. We've got an historic preservation plan, and it would seem that we would want new development to also be sympathetic with the built environment, the existing built environment. There are a whole lot of things to consider here. I'm asking you folks to return that function to the Planning Commission and have land developments like this come before the Planning Commission to be reviewed in public and have an opportunity for the public to comment. It's in the ordinance. It's what most communities in Pennsylvania do. It's a part of the municipal municipalities' planning document and state law. And I think it would be a good thing for that to happen. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for taking me early. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Bye-bye.
Anybody have any comment, reaction? I agree that it would be a good function for this body to undertake, I think, going forward.
Yep. I mean, I think it's unfortunate. Back in March, we were hoping to be able to start revisiting the SALDO, and, you know, that got shut down. So hopefully, it'll be something that we can revisit soon.
Just want, I'm sorry, just wanted to mention, the Perseus House development's going to be coming. That's clearly a land development. You've already got neighbors in the, in that neighborhood who are upset about it. This would be a perfect opportunity to be able to work out how that development will unfold with the input of the neighbors, considering they're not very happy with that zoning approval.
Yeah, but it was, I mean, just looking at that example, there's a fine line that we have to balance between, you know, individual, you know, landowners' rights and their, you know, ability to develop it, as well as when we're talking about group care facilities, you start to get into very, walk a very narrow line of discriminating against certain protected groups. So, yeah, it's something we need to think about, something we need to look at, but there's, just because we have hearings, we don't necessarily want to have every NIMBIE in the world come in just to complain.
No, but most communities, the public gets to participate in the land development process through the Planning Commission. They got their zoning approval, so I think that's been put to rest. Thank you again.
Have a good day.
Okay, moving on. I think identified as item three, minor subdivision, 2701 East Avenue.
Was there any other public comment before I cross that?
Oh, any other public comment?
Okay, we're done.
There being none, we'll move on. Thank you. Considering the minor subdivision for 2701 East Avenue. Is there any information we need to, it's up on the screen.
Gotcha. Now, if I was reading this correctly, this is going behind Holy Rosary and the Mercy Center, correct?
That's what I believe.
On 20, that's what I was looking at, okay. And this was an SSJ project, I think?
That's it. Is there anybody here to speak for? Anybody to speak for?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm Shad Sandell, the project manager at CT Consultants, surveyor. Any questions you can direct to me?
That's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I have none. I'll move to approve.
I was just wondering, what are they doing with the property? Did I miss that when I was reading it?
Additional sheltering.
That's what I thought. Okay. I just wanted to double check, because that's what I thought it was. No, no other questions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Guys, I have to, I have to register my vote as an abstention on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What's noted is item four, minor subdivision for 409 West Sixth Street.
All right, this is the Gannon property.
Anybody just representing the owners? This looks to be subdividing the properties between the dormitory on the south end of the lot from the building on the...
Is this just so they can knock down more housing, or what are they planning?
I think they're saving the house so that that connection between the two buildings is being demolished.
Okay, that sounds about right.
All right. Good. Anybody want to make a motion for approval?
I'll motion.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by, aye, by saying aye.
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 Item five, minor subdivision of 253-259 West 26th Street.
Shad, we put that subdivision plan together as well. Property, they're re-establishing actually what were...
The original lots.
Between the buildings.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, that's pretty straightforward then.
Yeah. I think so.
If it's just reverting land use.
In all three cases as well, the zoning setback requirements would be...
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, let's use them. I'll move to approve.
Okay, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Item number six, the SSJ Neighborhood Network 2024 Strategic Actions and Investment Plan.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah.
Is anyone...
No.
We got all types of extra stuff up here.
I'm just gonna give a brief introduction before Heather gets started. Hi, my name's Jackie Stry. I'm the Director of Planning and Neighborhood Resources of the City of Erie. And Heather Casper, the Executive Director of Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network Plan, Neighborhood Network, is here today to discuss the plan with you and with the hopes of having this plan fully adopted by City Council. Twenty-four years ago, December of 1999, following their annual analysis of Erie City's social determinants of health as performed by St. Vincent Hospital, the congregation of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Northwestern Pennsylvania, who also ran the hospital at this time, determined it was time to take further and direct action regarding the great needs of the Little Italy neighborhood surrounding and adjacent to the hospital. Twenty-four years of growth includes more than doubling the size of SSJ and service area, which initially included only census tract 12, 19, and a portion of 20. Nine years ago, the service area was extended across the full width of the city from Cranberry on the west to the east Bayfront connector on the west, on the, on the east. And that's a great, that's a great reference map there inside the plan. This new plan provides a clear path beyond that, identifying a single strategy with targeted corridors throughout the full footprint. This plan was developed in fiscal year 2023-24 and formally adopted by the Board of Directors, the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network Board of Directors on August 18th, 2024. It will provide the neighborhood network with an important framework for many grants and private investments that they want to funnel into the community within the six census tracts of their service area. The Planning and Neighborhood Resource Department of the City of Erie is in support of this plan, of its full adoption. And so we are just here to introduce and support Heather in today's presentation. And then obviously, we did have a study session about a month ago with council, and the hope is that once, once the plan is approved, hopefully through the Planning Commission, it would be fully adopted as a neighborhood plan of the city. Heather?
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you all for having me here. In case this is the only chance that you have or can take to really look through this plan, I do want to guide us through a few of the pages so that I am sure that it's, comes up fresh in your mind when, when future projects in this footprint also come to your attention. I will go quickly, though. It's a long meeting. If you turn right into the front page, you'll see that footprint, and that will get you oriented to what the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network footprint is. Many people are familiar with the work that the Sisters, that the network has done in Little Italy, and that started about 25 years ago. But as Jackie said with that wonderful introduction, thank you, Jackie, we did stretch right across the city about eight years ago, and this is the full footprint. And so to orient you there, north, the north boundary follows 12th Street train tracks at 14th, that area. And then that southern boundary is 26th Street. So that's a large portion of the city. We have over 13,000 people that live within this footprint. On the next spread in the, if you turn the page in the booklet, it shows you the six census tracts that are included within that footprint. On the next spread in the, if you turn the page in the booklet, it shows you the six census tracts that are included within that footprint. To orient you, twenty, census tract twenty there, at the far eastern edge of that is the Erie Cemetery. And so that's Chestnut Street that runs right between Nineteenth and Twenty, or Nineteen and Twenty. So this plan is not the social services that the Neighborhood Network provides. So if you're familiar with the soup kitchen that we do at St. Paul's on Mondays, our after-school programs, mentoring, tutoring, those kind of things, that's not included in this plan. This is a companion plan to an organizational strategic plan that we also have. But this is really addressing the built environment. And as required for a number of the grants that we get, we have to have a strategic plan that targets certain areas and certain zones based on data that we have collected from the, from the neighbors and the stakeholders. So in that third spread, where most of you are there, page six and seven, it shows our current initiatives. So when I say the built environment ones, they're listed at the bottom, sort of nutshell there for you. But it's really blight mitigation, green space, development, renovation, cleanups, neighborhood cleanups, home repair, home renovation, facade grants we have for businesses. We also have safety, we have security camera grants for businesses within the footprint as well, and some facade lighting to help with pedestrian level lighting and safety issues. And for homeowners, we have many repair grants and money also for lighting for their front porches, dawn-to dusk lighting and Ring cameras. So we're sort of trying to address the safety issues, both from a lighting standpoint and also some added surveillance for some, feeling of some personal safety. So those are the built environment kind of issues, items that we take care of. Each of the following six spreads then take an individual census tract and breaks down the demographics, the average age, occupied versus vacant housing, rent occupied, the population demographics themselves. Now, if you skip back to that second page, it's sort of an aggregate of all of the demographics for the whole footprint as well. And it kind of gives you a nice comparison between the two, and you'll see that there's a lot of diversity, a lot of diversity between the census tracts as well.
I mean, overall, this is very impressive with the level of detail. I mean, obviously down to individual houses that are going to be there. So this is, I mean, this is exciting to see. We all have planned. This is, I mean, really impressive.
Oh, thank you. I actually, the thing that I'm most excited about, if you turn to the centerfold, when we engaged City Architecture out of Cleveland, who is the same group that did the Arwas Bayfront Plan, so if you guys were here for that adoption too, then you're familiar with them. Because the Neighborhood Network and the Sisters are not known for doing a whole lot of plans that just sit on a shelf. We're known for getting stuff done. What I did first was forward to them any plan that already existed from any other organization that covered this footprint. Because there, it's a large footprint, and there are a lot of organizations that are working on this. So we have everything from the United Way Safe Roots to School Plan. We've got some of the PennDOT Safety VRU. We have a lot of plans. And so I forwarded them all of these plans. And then if you turn to that next page, the priority initiatives. Now, this is, this sort of brings you in a snapshot. I mentioned that this is a companion plan to our strategic plan as an organization. We identified these priority initiatives, addressing the physical image, crime prevention and safety, economic development, affordable housing, neighborhood conservation and community engagement. And what City Architecture did for us is they created this matrix that says, okay, so the Erie Refocus Plan also addresses physical image, economic development, neighborhood conservation. So it showed to us where the obvious overlap is for us to leverage each other's activities. And then also showed us some gaps where this is, this is an area where nobody's really working on this right now. And so this is an area of opportunity for us to focus on. So that is, that's that, that spread there. We're trying to be really conscious of what other people are doing. We have a lot of people to serve in a large footprint, not a lot, not a large staff, not a lot of money. And so we need to be mindful of where, of where we spend that. Page 24, they did provide us then some key takeaways. The first sentence, of course, standalone, there's a high level of need in this planning area that doesn't come as a surprise to any of us. Some of the recommendations, I'm not going to read all of these, but some of them that we also, within our organizational strategic plan identified. There's a need to balance the programming, since the Sisters had been doing work in Little Italy for 25 years now. When you look at the maps of where our activities have taken place, it's very heavy in that area, which is to be expected. But there's a need now to better balance out the activities to spread throughout the whole footprint. We also, right now, are operating out of two offices. We have our main office on West Eighteenth Street, and then we have a satellite office on East 26th Street. And for efficiency reasons, that is more expensive for us to maintain locations. And so they, the planners recommended that we find a centralized location and bring our efforts together and then find ways to have still presence in each neighborhood, but to bring our operations together for some efficiency. Our homeownership program that we have, which... We, we purchased blighted multi-units that are, we're able to save. And then we renovate them and then rent those to program participants within a homeownership program that we have. And so they are, we're helping them to save, and we're helping them to learn how to become homeowners and to take care of a home. And at the same time, we are purchasing single-family homes in our footprint and renovating those because when folks graduate from our program, there isn't existing safe housing for them to purchase within our footprint, which of course we want them to do. So we are sort of doing those activities at the same time to create the single-family home availability as our own program participants are able to reach a point where they can get approved for a mortgage and have saved for the down payment for that. So the planner said, this is a great program, keep doing that, do it more, spread that across your footprint. Most people are aware of the community gardens in Little Italy, and we have eight of them actually, and two orchards. And we have the Little Italy Farmer's Market on Mondays. The planners also agreed that that is a great, the tearing down of blight and replacing that with green space and community gardens and providing an opportunity for increased food access is something that they also encouraged us to increase across the footprint. Just name recognition and placemaking, everybody knows where Little Italy is. The other areas within our footprint, some people are familiar with Central City because of that neighborhood watch. So they said, how can you help those other groups that already exist to establish a little more placemaking or a little more pride of place? And how can you move into some of those areas that don't have pride of place and help neighbors establish that too? So that's something that we'll be focusing on. Of course, we have a large new American and refugee population within our footprint. So we already work closely with, with all of those folks, and they are integrated into all of our programs. We need to keep doing that. Partnerships, very important. This is a large footprint. We have a little staff. And so if there already exists a Booker T, exists a Central City, exists church groups that are really involved in their neighborhoods, then we need to support them and help lift them up versus trying to take on any of it ourselves. They also identified larger infrastructure improvements that need to happen within this footprint. Of course, that's not something that we individually have any control over or any authority to, to pursue. But we would love to partner. We, this happened starting about 10 years ago. And if, if any of you remember the eight, what Eighteenth Street used to look like before the paving and the new sidewalks and the curbside gardens. And so that was, that was a grant that, that the city applied for, that we assisted in, in helping to get neighbor input and to decide what that plan should look like. And so that's something that we'd be very interested. There are areas that we should focus on that need significant impact. And we can shortcut for, for you, for planning purposes. We can shortcut and get people directly in touch with neighbors for engagement that's needed for those. So the rest of the plan shows just priority areas of focus. That next page shows we've already got work in Little Italy. We've already got established work in our East Side neighborhood, East of Parade there, Federal Hill as well. We did a strategic plan with those guys. There are some initiatives that other people identified as well that are some gateway. That's sort of the star on here, right at the intersection of Brown Avenue and Liberty would be one, right at the top of the hill of Federal Hill. And then also over at Parade and 26th Street, sort of entryways into all of those paths that go downtown. They provided us with some suggestions. The next few pages, some specific suggestions for the Federal Hill corridor, Little Italy neighborhood, East Side neighborhood. And they helped us to identify some corridors, which is really helpful for us because it's such a large area. They took a look at East 22nd Street. They knew that the city recently purchased the Miller, Miller Brothers Building and has some plans there. Maybe we could help to integrate that at 22nd Street into what, what all the neighbors would like to see. Maybe some of those plans could include neighbor input. Eighteenth Street, continue what we're doing with some of that placemaking identity work in Little Italy. Also Chestnut Street, we've been talking with the Cemetery Association about doing some real, and the hospital right there, about doing some really exciting projects. There used to be tulips, for example, that people would go see in the cemetery every year. And they're interested in redoing that and maybe having tulips also at St. Vincent, at Sarah Reid, and at Duffer, and places where it can become in, in the spring, someplace where you can go and see the tulips just sort of as a wow factor for that neighborhood. So little things like that. Some signage, walkability issues. Strategic actions they recommended for our gateways, those that I mentioned at Brown Avenue, Liberty, West 26th and Peach Street. We already completed those, have got the funding to complete those big, huge murals right at the top of Federal Hill. Parade Street and 26th Street, the work that's happening at Palac is right now, the windows being replaced is part of some funding that we helped to secure. So then the last couple of pages, just a chart of those priority initiatives. We were able to say, these are some things that we think that we can start working on right away. These are some midterm, these are some long-term initiatives. And then the pink chart on the very last page too, is the gateways and corridors. And I'll leave you just with the infrastructure projects comment again because it is, these are, these are items. Sidewalk replacement, reconstruction, road repaving, street light, traffic light, traffic calming measures. All of those kind of things require cooperation with the city as well. And so these are things that we, we bring in. In the last five years, we've brought in almost $5 million into improvements within this neighborhood. And those are not city dollars. Those are not, those are private investments, either donations or tax credits. And so we absolutely do this work expecting to bring resources to the table. And so we would, we would like very much for that effort to be a companion to what the city is doing as well in these neighborhoods. So I think in the interest of time, I'm going to just ask if there are any other questions or any other comments.
I just want to say, I agree with Colin. I think the amount of detail in this is outstanding. I do like the, even the details to like the crosswalks and the safe traffics, especially in neighborhoods where you see a lot of bus traffic, a lot of kids, things like that. I, I think that the detail was really great, and it is 100% community-based. I mean, everything in here was how it's going to benefit those neighborhoods. So I enjoyed it.
Just for clarity, in terms of next steps, is it for us to approve? Are we able to vote on this today for adoption or is it something that needs...
Okay.
Well, in a moment, I'll, I'll say something. But I just wanted to again commend the work that was put in here. I, we joke, I think, after almost every meeting about how there are cabinets filled with plans, and Erie is the city of plans without action. So the way that this has been brought together, I, I think is absolutely fantastic. And I'm obviously partial to the placemaking, you know, approach that you took to it. So I think this is exactly the type of thinking Erie needs more of. So thank you for, for doing this. This is great.
I agree.
Absolutely. So what we'll be doing is making a recommendation to city council to accept and approve their Strategic Actions and Investments Plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Just have to make a motion.
So I will move to adopt it, or to make the recommendation to adopt it.
I'll second.
Second. Is there, everyone who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. All right, we're into item seven, the Historic Resource Designation for the Erie Day School.
Good afternoon. I'm Heather Olson, the Historic Preservation Planner for the City of Erie. And Christina Caton is here from the Erie Day School. And we will be discussing the recent HRC vote for this particular property. I think what we'll do is I'll give an overview of my letter of recommendation based on the HRC's decision and my staff review. And then Christina is here to add some details, answer any questions about the particular site, since she knows it very well. As you likely read, the Historic Review Commission on September 9th discussed and voted to approve the local designation of Erie Day School as a local historic site. The, the school was, was established in 1929, and it still remains open and is thriving nearly 100 years later. The school is situated on a property once owned by Charles Strong and donated to the school organization. And what's unique about this particular school and site is the progressive education principle, which the school implemented from its initial inception stage. And that includes a hands-on learning curriculum that ties to both the surrounding physical environment as well as to our regional places. Field days, garden days, and farm days were common visitation and work-based experiences for both students and their parents. Today, it remains the... Today, it remains the only independent school in northwestern Pennsylvania. And it holds accreditation through the Pennsylvania Association of Independent Schools. So that's pretty noteworthy. Um, the criteria for designation for the Erie Day School is rooted in its national ties to progressive and independent education. It is also associated with an event that is significant to the history of the, of the municipality Commonwealth or nation. As a secondary criteria for designation, it's associated with persons of significance to the history of the municipality Commonwealth or nation. In this case, it was Charles Strong, um, of the Erie and Pittsburgh Railroad Company. He was the president and then later the Edison Electric Light and Power Company president. It is through this sequence that the Historic Review Commission and city staff have considered, reviewed and accepted the nomination of Erie Day School as historic site. In a moment, I will make a, make a recommendation to the city, uh, to the planning commission to then recommend to city council for the amendment and update of the zoning map and the inclusion of this property on the local register of historic places as a historic site. Christina, would you like to add anything or answer any questions prior to that?
I would just like to add, uh, we are the only accredited independent school in Pennsylvania right now, in northwest Pennsylvania. But I also wanted to acknowledge the fact that we continue to practice the same educational philosophy and principles as when the school was founded. So the experiential learning, the hands-on experiences, uh, field trips, lots of cultural excursions are still today a very, um, important and basic part of our curriculum.
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
That's a huge part that I forgot to mention. So they're, they're still practicing what they preached back in 1929. Um, and as Jake is scrolling through the images of both then and now, um, it's very apparent that the school is a very unique place within the municipality and that it upheld and still upholds this independent vision for a broader level of education. And especially in this day and age, I think that's very appropriate that we recognize this site and that vision. Therefore, if there are no other questions or if there are any questions, um, I request a recommendation that go to council for this to, um, uh, be an amendment and update of the zoning map and the inclusion of this property on the local register of historic places as historic site.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
No. Someone's like to make a recommendation or motion to recommend the city council adoption.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there, uh, any other comments before we proceed to a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, historic res- uh, resource designation, the Old Customs House.
Thank you.
Can I just give Melanie a second to join us?
Hi, I'm Melanie Vadzemnix and I'm the Development Director at the Erie Art Museum.
So we have applicant number two with us today for these, um, these discussions, which is great. Um, so, um, I'm Heather Olson, Historic Preservation Planner for the City of Erie. And, um, we recently also saw this application for, um, local designation of historic structure. Slightly different from the last application. Um, this went through the HRC on November 4th. And, um, what's unique about this particular nomination is the structure is an exceptional example of Greek revival style architecture. It utilized the finest Vermont marble, hand-cut and finished at the quarry in Vermont. So a long time ago, pre-automobile.
The, the, the transfer of that, of that marble from Vermont to Erie was quite impressive.
And luckily we have the, the outline. We'll, we'll go through that quickly. And they were, they were finished, numbered. So if you can picture designing it and then numbering it all so that it could be reconfigured like Legos, but, you know, hundreds and hundreds of miles away, um, and loaded onto large carts hauled by horse, mule and oxen on an overland journey spanning three or four days' time. Once it got to Whitehall, New York from Vermont, the marble pieces were careful, were carefully offloaded onto a ship and transported from the Champlain and Hudson Canal and then to the Erie Canal, westward to Buffalo. Once in Buffalo, the marble transitioned a third time via steamship over Lake Erie to the Erie lakeside docks. Um, the structure was designed by architect William Kent of Philadelphia and it took about two years to build between 1837 and 39. Um, originally it was intended as the Erie branch of the United States Bank of Pennsylvania due to the huge population boom of the 1830s. Upon the closing of the bank in 1843, um, the port of Erie used the building as the official customs house. I think the original safe and vault still remain in the building and I got to see those. They're very impressive. Um, I do recommend a tour to anyone. Between 1853 and 67, a post office was located there. And then from 1867 to 1909, the building was guarded and watched by the Grand, Grand Army of the Republic. Um, thereafter, the local county historical society occupied it. And in 1977, the building was placed on the National Register of Historic Places. The museum, what did they purchase in 1983?
1983 it became part of, it became the Erie Art Museum.
In a recent tour of the building, uh, determined that both the interior and the exterior are, are of high quality. The interior has, um, the majority of original fixtures. The exterior is in great condition considering the harsh lake effect winters that we do occasionally get from time to time. So overall, the level of architectural integrity is very high, both inside and out. Our criteria for the justification of this nomination includes that it's associated with an event significant to the history of the municipality Commonwealth or nation. So we talked about how the Old Customs House was originally built and designed as the Erie branch of the, uh, Bank of Pennsylvania. The second criteria, it is representative of broad patterns of development, heritage or culture. And we talked about, um, its connection to Erie and the different sequences the building has gone through. And the third level of justification is that it embodies distinctive characteristics of style, type, period or method of construction of architecture. Do you want to talk about this one maybe a little bit?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So this is one of my favorite things about it, um, is that, uh, this is a Greek revival style and it's based upon the Theseion Temple of ancient Athens, which was dedicated to the gods of trade and the arts. And this building has significantly been used for trade and the arts. Uh, so I think, I just think that's really cool. But it does, it demonstrates all of the, um, this was, this was a quote, um, in Greek revival architecture in America. "The Old Customs House demonstrates design which is vital, sensitive and archaeologically correct."
Just to follow up on that because, um, yeah, that's a big deal. Recently, last week, uh, the, the survey team, the field survey team, EDR from Syracuse, um, started the citywide historic resources survey. And, um, they actually completed the whole downtown corridor. And so they have officially field surveyed the Erie Art Museum as one of the historic structures for downtown. It's one of 11,000 parcels. That's 11 followed by three zeros within the city of Erie that they will be looking at. So, um, it's commendable that they started downtown and that they have actually already field surveyed the, the Erie Art Museum, which aligns with the recent Historic Preservation Plan Initiative. Um, it is through this sequence, um, that I'm requesting, um, uh, the recommendation to city council for the amendment and update of the zoning map and the inclusion of this property on the local register of historic places as a historic building or historic structure. I'm sorry, historic structure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Motion to?
I don't see it.
I don't know.
I'll move. Yeah. I love that building. Yeah. I'll, I'll move to, uh, recommend it to council for the amendment.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine. Talk about 12th Street Reimagined Plan.
Hello again.
Hi.
Yeah. Really.
Yeah, really. Uh, hi. My name's Jackie Spry. I'm the, um, Planning Director for, uh, the City of Erie. We are here again to talk to you about the 12th Street Reimagined Plan, Plan. Jenny Easton is with us from Pachik. Jenny is one of three consultants that have been working on this plan. Um, Pachik, WRNA, who did the transportation component and then the, uh, economic, uh, analysis. Oh, I'm sorry. Fourth.
Fourth Economy?
Yes. Fourth Economy did the economic analysis, uh, for, for this plan. Um, this was a, this was, I'm a bit echoed. Sorry. Um, can you hear me? Is it still okay? This plan, as you know, I've been updating you for, I don't know how long, maybe since last April, I think, is when we started. Um, and as you know, it went through a series of, the scope went through a series of transitions and, um, we, uh, had an engagement process. And then the final, the draft plan was submitted sometime in midsummer, uh, maybe mid to late summer. Um, and then the city, uh, had many revisions for the plan. Not necessarily, uh, maybe additions or suggestions that then Pachik incorporated and, um, you know, really was able to, um, address some of the, the edits that the city had. Planning and public works and the administration. So we now have our final draft. Um, and Jenny is here to talk to us today about that draft.
Thanks, Jackie. Hello, everybody. It's nice to see some of you again. So I'll provide a high-level overview of the process and the plan, which, uh, developed over an expedited timeline earlier this year. Um, I had the opportunity to speak with some of you back in May about how the project was developing. Um, that conversation was tremendously helpful at that point, um, to hear your ideas and your concerns. Some of those, of course, pertain to the limited extent of the corridor project area, the scope and our five-month project timeline and what those limitations meant for the project's potential to derive meaningful transformation of this space and other more economically disadvantaged areas along the corridor that so many, we know, want to see change. Um, so the full plan does establish itself as phase one of what it argues is a much-needed, more holistic look at the full 12th Street corridor and its context across the city. Some of the improvement projects it contains could be extended or replicated on other parts of the corridor. Others are specific to the parcels, um, the primarily industrial use environment on these blocks. But we know this needs to be the starting point of a broader conversation. And frankly speaking, only on behalf of my firm, um, this should include exploration for the entire corridor of the tension between the desire to maximize the corridor as a platform for efficient vehicle travel and the desire to develop it as a place. Next slide, please. Um, so we kicked the project off on the consultant side in February. Um, as Jackie said, the consultant team was led by WRA, a multi-disciplinary engineering firm, um, with traffic expertise, supported by my planning and landscape architecture team at Pachik and the economic development experts at Fourth Economy. Oh, you have the clicker.
Yes. You want it?
No, it's in good hands.
Okay.
Um, an expiring grant necessitated the compressed project schedule. So we were conducting public and stakeholder engagement as we completed background market and engineering research and fieldwork. Uh, we had a project steering committee that met in February to help chart a course for the project and set expectations. This group met three more times as the recommendations started to take shape. To briefly recap, some of the engagement milestones, um, Fourth Economy led our first public event back in March. We had great turnout at that event and good conversations about the type of investment and development people want to see in the corridor, um, rooted in the market realities of what the area will realistically support post-COVID. Um, there is a project landing page on the city's website where we posted surveys and documents as they developed, along with project updates. Um, we conducted many interviews with corridor business owners, developers, real estate professionals, representatives from different kinds of advocacy groups, um, agencies that are stakeholders like EMTA. We met with Cathedral Prep students immediately after they had a volunteer cleanup activity, picking up trash along 12th Street. So they told us about their experience and then their kind of day-to-day, um, travels across the corridor uh, between the event center and the school. Our May event was an evening public meeting to bring the community up to speed on how the project was developing and solicit feedback on the recommendations to mark up some big maps. Um, and finally, the chamber hosted a meeting for corridor business owners, uh, many of whom had been engaged throughout the process to give them a chance to respond to early recommendations before the draft plan was released. So we released a draft online for public review and comment, as well as comment, um, from the steering committee stakeholders yourselves. Um, we received lots of thoughtful comments, um, many, I would say, from professional stakeholders. We also appreciate those we received from Mr. Welsh and Mr. Russ. So all of that factors into the updated edition you have before you today. So what's in the plan? On the transportation side, our project engineers, from the beginning, recognized the role that 12th Street plays in the city and regional transportation network, carrying more daily vehicle traffic volume than either 26th Street or 38th. It is the major east-west route through the city, the designated emergency route for I-90. It carries a lot of trucks to interstate connections, as well as serving as a major arterial link to many city neighborhoods. So accordingly, um, if the next one is revision, if that is revision, if we can stay there for a second. We envision 12th as part of a complete corridor, meaning that there is a need for 12th Street to carry heavy traffic volumes with efficiency and that 10th Street is its primary active transportation counterpart to safely, comfortably bike, walk and use transit east-west. Um, that said, we learned during this process that a lot of people cross 12th Street and that these crossings are dangerous and uncomfortable. So improving intersections for pedestrians remains a critical priority. Suspense. I don't want to spend too much time on maps given your full agenda today, but the interesting takeaway from this one, um, this shows, so traffic coming from 79, um, moving to the other side of the city along 12th Street. Um, the interesting thing is that only 6% travels all the way through the city along 12th Street, meaning that, um, this road is a critical connection to these neighborhoods. It's kind of a spine that connects them. So the plan recommends focusing, again, those pedestrian safety improvements at key intersections especially, but, um, at all intersections along that corridor. Maintaining volume support, so this is not a road diet recommendation. However, we are looking for ways to incorporate traffic calming effects, reducing the visual impact of the road. There are painted shoulders along segments of this road, um, that we think long-term, long-range, um, could be, um, kind of shrunk as longitudinal curb extension. So you can bring the curb out into those painted shoulders, um, which would have a traffic calming effect. It's kind of, um, uh, staged road diet, as it were, part of it's been started. Additionally, we suggest some ways along this corridor to strengthen bike-ped connections. And I would say the engineers concluded that, um, the recommendations in the plan need to account for the role within the regional transportation network. Um, so some of the specific action items are here. There are cost estimates, um, included along with the plan for these things. So short-term, these are things that could happen almost immediately, signal retiming, um, some of the crossing visibility enhancements. And right now, um, prior to building curb out. into the striped areas, we could at least incorporate some kind of art or paint to help further delineate those areas as places where cars should not be traveling. Curb extensions or bump outs would be appropriate at crosswalks. We talked a bit with our business stakeholders about those. There are certain locations where they feel they would impede truck operations. So, the plan includes some details about how to incorporate those, where that would need to be taken into consideration. We recommend, I think on the next slide, we have a picture of this, the, well, we'll get to it. A bicycle park-and-ride at Green Garden. But just kind of to give you a sense of how the vision would be coming together from the transportation side, existing conditions here, I think this is Cranberry and 12th. On the next slide, so you see, we're trying to further delineate shoulder space where we can, incorporate green elements, public art and landscaping where we can, wayfinding an identity. What you see tucked in the back there is an industrial heritage display, so maybe that's not the specific location for it, but that was something we heard was important to people to reinforce the identity of the corridor and lean into that, create some, something of public interest. The curb extension shown here is an apron design, meaning that it could be rolled over where trucks would have trouble navigating around one in a traditional design. But that's something that would have to be negotiated during installation with property owners to see what would work best for all, every, all the stakeholders. This is the active transportation component. So, you'll see this is coordinated with Active Erie. All the recommendations of Active Erie appear here. Additionally, we have added a recommendation for a bike-way connection to Bayfront here. We determined that there's a gap for people riding down Green Garden to get to 10th to get to Bayfront, so that's an important connection to complete the network. There's our bike park-and-ride that I mentioned earlier, just a rendering of what that could be. So, this is an important location within the Active Erie, active transportation plan. If folks are coming down
(noise)
from the north, headed toward downtown, this would be a place where maybe they could park a car, get a bike out, ride into the city, maybe some amenities, maybe a restroom or a bike pumping station, what have you, to incentivize mode shift, get more people on bikes.
Is this the, is this the north, nor, looking northwest side of the street? I'm a little confused.
Yes, we're looking toward 12th, from, is it Bayfront? Or the middle between?
I don't know.
Or is it looking south?
Yeah, I think you're looking south.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
Looking south. But if you were looking south, that's private property on one side, that's the Lord's site. So...
This should be a block or two south of 12th.
Yeah.
So, it's behind the, is it the scuba place?
That would be north of 12th.
That's north, yeah.
And we'll turn around.
It's okay, it's okay.
When you, sorry.
No, go ahead.
When you say get them, you know, parking and taking more bikes and stuff, are you looking to incorporate some of these, like, electrical bikes and scooters like you see in the bigger cities and stuff? Is that kind of what you're going towards?
Yeah, the scooters have taken-
Or like they would bring their own bikes, kind of thing? Like, we have EMTA where they can have their bikes-
Share bike.
Put it on, yeah, like a share bike, okay.
City bike-type thing.
Yeah, this would be a prime location for that type of thing. The scooters seem to be on a different legislative adventure in every city, but if those are viable here and that's a network that people can take advantage of, this would be a good spot for it.
I'm only addicted because I rode one in Atlanta, so that's, no.
Yeah, they're wonderful.
No, I was wondering about the bikes, because we do have the EMTA where you can ride and then put your bike on the front of the bus, so I didn't know if this was like a, would be like a collective parking and then people can get to their smaller destination, or to their destinations on like a smaller means, or if this was a, like you said, like a share bike kind of thing, so.
We talked with the MTA about using an underutilized section of the park-and-ride for this purpose.
Close to Green Garden, yes, okay, so that's what I'm seeing in my head, too, yeah.
Okay, on the land use side, we looked kind of globally at the ordinance, at the other regulations in play, as well as from the market side, where there were specific opportunities for redevelopment, low-hanging fruit, or things that would be important perhaps for the next 10 years. So, we heard through public engagement, through stakeholder engagement, through everything we learned in this process, that redevelopment here needs to reinforce what's important about this area. The Comprehensive Plan said that 12th Street needs to be a place where things are made, so we respect that. We are avoiding competing with other types of retail nodes nearby, we're not competing with downtown. But there are opportunities to incentivize, to make way for investment that would be complementary to the industrial uses that are here, and perhaps in some cases, meet needs that neighborhoods have identified as being important and missing. So, this is from the Comprehensive Plan, again, a 12th Street corridor, needs to be a place where things are made. So, we think it would make sense to incorporate changes identified in this plan as part of a broader zoning ordinance update, or maybe a SADO update if that's coming down the line at some point. So, we took a look specifically at the M2 district, which covers a large percentage of the parcels within our study area. We talked about an overlay that could incentivize really high development standards in exchange for some flexibility on uses that does not exist currently. We talked about removing billboards as a permitted use in M2. Of course, you'd have to determine that that wouldn't effectively zone in and out of the city entirely, but there are other districts where this use is permitted, so we think that that's a reasonable recommendation. And modernizing, stepping up the landscape requirements, there are landscape requirements for other sections of the city from which we could borrow here to increase what's required and green it up a little bit. So, there's a section about architectural standards. Of course, that's something that would be a trade-off, maybe something that the city wouldn't have the legal authority to compel everybody to comply with, but something that the city could establish and articulate and set a bar for achieving architectural excellence in exchange for flexibility that may be appealing to developers and make different types of investments possible. So, we've identified some of the characteristics, some of the contributing historic qualities and features of the buildings that contribute to how people think about the corridor historically, and we want to see those carried forward in new construction. Otherwise, policy and regulations should support the corridor's continued productivity. We learned along the way that the corridors may be not as vacant as many people seem to believe, that there's a lot of activity in buildings that look derelict or abandoned. Things are happening there, money is being made there, people are working there. So, I think it's important for the city to continue to engage with property owners and find ways to make investment there attractive. So, there's a bit of carrot and stick energy to this section of the plan. We are talking about enforcing, stepping up standards, enforcing code requirements more consistently, making sure those standards are respected and known, and also finding incentives, things for property owners to pursue, things that make deals work for them so that they'll improve the condition and the appearance of their buildings.
Spry.
You're fine. So, in terms of key sites, just, we looked at a lot of sites, but to highlight a couple, we mentioned Green Garden. We're looking at this as maybe the best opportunity for human-scaled, walk-bike-oriented stuff, meaning that there could be retail here or dining, especially given the location capitalizing along, the point along the bike network, and proximate to destinations that we know are important to people. If there is anywhere along our project study area that makes sense for this type of development, it would be here. So, again, kind of human-scaled, something accessible to people approaching on foot or bike. We have some outdoor dining space here, some retail maybe that would not compete with downtown but complementary for this location within the city. And the former Riley Stoker site was just outside of our project area but kept arising in conversation as an important opportunity. So, of course, this sits between the industrial character of 12th Street and residential in Little Italy, so this would need to be respectful of its neighbors and transitional in nature, so we'd have to be careful with noise and other environmental impacts. There is an at-grade rail crossing, so we'd have to negotiate with the railroad and making sure crossing would be safe for pedestrians as well as vehicles. And the site has some environmental remediation question marks, I think, that would need to be determined. But we heard in our consultation with the neighborhood groups that there's a lot of desire for food production in this area of the city, this is a food desert, and ideally some kind of grocery retail. So, maybe it's not a large retail grocery store, but something like a hall where food vendors could congregate in a 24, 12-month market would be really valued by those who live nearby. So, for our last category, amenities, beautification, kind of our ketchell category. Again, we had the mention of the industrial heritage display or park amenity. We knew that Ironworks Square has something like that in development, so maybe it's worth talking with them. Other partners in the area, potential funders, I think, would be maybe interested in this kind of investment, including corridor property owners potentially. I think we felt pretty strongly that there's a need for improved signage, wayfinding. That's something that's fairly inexpensive but would have a large impact. There is a photo of the current gateway signage coming in from 79, I think the city could improve that drastically. We have a recommendation for some additional plantings. We heard at every stage of public engagement that people want to see green infused in the corridor. So, understanding that a lot of the property is private and the city cannot compel everyone to plant a forest tomorrow, there are some approaches you can take to introduce native plantings that we think would be appropriate relatively inexpensive, would have an impact. The moonshot, and I think it's called this in the plan, would be undergrounding overhead utility lines for resiliency reasons as well as beautification. So, maybe that coincides with an upgrade in technology at some point, it's worth having on the radar and having memorialized in the plan in case that's a conversation with providers that becomes viable at some point. Public art, so we have a couple of slides of what this looks like, but to the extent property owners are willing to play ball, maybe it's worth introducing ideas to them about veneer treatments or other exterior improvements that would be relatively inexpensive, that might dress up the corridor, reinforce a sense of local pride and identity. A couple other basic things, the traffic signal cabinets, the city has examples of this working nicely, it's simply an inexpensive way to make some of these intersections look a little nicer. And street murals, we thought, especially kind of as an interim step before concrete can be poured, those projects are expensive and difficult to develop, what is more attainable is engaging community groups and public art projects. So, PennDOT is considering adopting a new manual for a street design that would allow for street murals. In the meantime, these are allowed on local streets to the extent Public Works is willing to work with that idea. So, communities across the country are finding that these are a way to engage people in beautifying the environment, and the murals often have a traffic calming effect that is nice. So, we have costs in there for that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we did the one on the bottom in Pittsburgh, that's in Mount Washington. But that was pointedly a traffic calming project, so they can be designed as such. Yeah. Yep, okay. So, as I said, we envisioned this, and the plan states that it is Phase One of a larger effort of conversation that we feel pretty strongly would need to continue. We learned a lot in a short amount of time during this process, so we'll provide all the documentation we have to the city, all of our conversations, all the engineering work, in hopes that it's the beginning of a broader conversation about the corridor and its context, that the city can carry forward into having an impact in this segment of the corridor that we examined, and then hopefully more broadly in the years to come. So, these are, I just, in case anyone had questions, I have the detailed sections.
Sure. These are all in the plan.
They are.
That's it. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Can you send a copy of that? Or is it available? I, I-
I can resend it, yes.
Okay, I must have just missed the-
It's okay, I think, I think I sent it on Monday, so-
Yeah, it just got buried in my inbox.
So, we are, we are presenting tomorrow to Council as well. A lot of the questions I have around the 12th Street plan are whether or not this plan will be incorporated into the Safe Streets and Roads for All Plan? Yes, all of this information will be incorporated. And as you are aware, once we're finished with the Safety Action Plan in April, May, the hope is to go out for implementation money for that plan, which will incorporate 12th Street. So, the turnaround might be a little bit quicker than we anticipated. We also have street tree money. We have $327,000 in street trees right now that we need to spend fairly quickly. And we do have money going towards sidewalks, but it's only around schools at this, for this particular project, which I believe is, I don't want to give you the wrong number, but it was announced a couple of weeks ago that we have money going towards sidewalk improvement. So, also, the city committed to a Vision Zero Plan, which is zero fatalities by 2035, which is a pretty aggressive schedule, but they, they feel that it's a priority of this because we've had so many fatalities this year.
Oh, yeah.
And three, mind you, on 12th Street.
Yeah.
Only Erie would say that 10 years is a, you know, quick turnaround.
Well, some, some cities are doing 20, some are doing 30. I mean, 20 is more aggressive from the consultant's point of view, but is, but, but very much needed. So, and the, we've had, right, we've had 10 fatalities this year, three of which have been on, four pedestrian fatalities, and three of those were on 12th Street.
On 12th, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's-
At night.
At night.
Most at night.
At night. And, and some of, they're varying consequences. I mean, some of them are not in crosswalk. One of them, I think, or two of them were not in a crosswalk, but-
Yeah, but I, I also drive 12th Street home sometimes from work because I have to teach until nine o'clock, and it is dark, and Erie has that effect where if we don't have snow, it almost seems so much darker.
Mm-hmm.
And 12th Street does not seem as lit as some of the other streets, even though we have streetlights. Like, it just seems very dark to me.
Right, right.
Wow.
So, yeah.
And considering the high speed that much of the traffic crosses that segment of 12th Street, it's, it's amazing it's not more, more common.
And we received, yeah, we received a, a little later in, in the process, we received information from both Strong Vincent and from, was it Erie High?
Yeah, we have those numbers in the updated plan.
Yeah, which I-
Number of students who cross 12th every day.
Which is a lot, a lot of-
Well, we only have Erie High, so yeah, they have to go-
Right.
Up there, and yeah, I guess I didn't think about that.
I mean, you have, you have Prep as well. I mean, Prep students are crossing-
They walk, they cross up there.
-mid-block on, what is it, Walnut, right? They cross it-
Yeah, just randomly.
Randomly.
Randomly, yeah, they'll come around like after Myrtle or something and just walk across.
So, you have a lot of students crossing back and forth, Strong Vincent, Erie High, and Prep, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I'll say this has been a very frustrating process to go through. I mean, it seems to me that, if you'll excuse my language, it's ass-backwards. You know, the city goes through and cleans up 12th Street, repaves it, puts huge lanes running through, puts, you know, non-travel parking, I don't know what's on the, what they call them, and then PennDOT comes along and redoes all the signals to reflect that. And now, we're studying how to improve it. And now we're studying how to improve it, you know? And with recommendations for, to make changes that are hard to imagine the city carrying through. That, you know, I just have found it extremely disappointing, the result. I mean, I looked at one in detail, one of the earlier versions, and the only thing I could see for sure was that there were a lot of tarted up intersections with lots of paint, that I really wonder if the Streets Department will keep up as soon as it wears out.
Well, I think that's, you know, one of the biggest issues is, you know, we talk about blight being such a problem. You know, that's a problem caused by the owners of those facilities. They are not facilities owned by the city.
Right.
So not only is this a matter of subsidizing them not keeping up with their own facilities, but what is there, what, what is there to suggest that we aren't going to be in this exact same situation in ten, twenty years from now after a couple rough winters? So it, it's, and I, I want to make clear, I mean, I think it's great, the work has been done, but again, at the end of the day, this is when we've pointed you in the wrong direction from the beginning and blindfolded you and tied one arm behind your back. There's only so much that can reasonably be expected. I think y'all did a fantastic job with what you had, but I think that the city itself has a lot of questions it needs to ask and then actually answer that it hasn't really taken any time to do.
Jason, you have any comments, questions?
Uh, I echo what, what you guys said. It's definitely frustrating and feel like it's, it's kind of half-baked still for, for what we really need long-term for the corridor and all the demographics and uses that stretch across it. I think we need to get this right. Short-sightedness is not a, not a good planning strategy for, for Erie.
Noted.
Okay, so what do you want from us? What do you need from us?
Well, we, we're with the hopes that, I mean, we're not asking for, we're not asking for adoption tomorrow at council. We're only presenting to them. So the resolution is not prepared yet. So if you would like to make a motion to have council, to push it through to council, that would be ideal, so that it makes it into the Safe, Safety Action Plan, the recommendations, that would be, that, or we can wait to make a motion at the next meeting. It's fine, too. This was really just so that it was in front of you. You had chances to, you had a chance to ask questions directly to the consultant. And I'm happy for you to wait till the next meeting and I can formally, you know, have the resolution for council and all of that. Or you can make a motion to adopt now.
Anybody have a pleasure?
I think maybe a little more conversation?
Yeah, I think that, that, I mean-
I like the logic behind it, and I do think that Twelve Street does need to be improved. But I do agree kind of with Colin, like, when you have so many private businesses there, how are you going to hold them accountable to what we're looking for? Because then it might end up with that mix of you have some places that are outstanding and beautiful and up-kept, and then you have some that are just trashed. And then you get that mix. So I like the plan.
And I, I think with, with the Safety Action Plan, I mean, they're, right now, we're in the process of looking at safety countermeasures, right? So solutions to the, the issues. There's two types of, there's two types of recommendations that the, that will come out of the Safety Action Plan. One was considered systemic, a systemic solution, and the other one is more point-specific solution. So for instance, systemic is like, how do we across the city make, make big changes? I don't know what that may be at this moment. Maybe it's a complete streets network. And then the, the point-specific solutions would be at specific intersections that have maybe the highest fatalities, the most severe injuries. So those are going to be priorities that will be set throughout this 2030 timeline for the city to address, with of course the Lois hanging through first. So Twelve Street is absolutely a priority. I mean, it's on the high injury network. We know that there's been deaths, serious injuries throughout a decade, if not more. So it, it absolutely is, is within that network of, 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 of the, of the, you know, network of, I want to say, of priorities, you know? So I just, I think there are really good recommendations for land use also in here and the overlay districts, and you know, Jake's, Jake had input into the plan and-
And I do like the bikes and stuff like that, and I think Green Garden is perfect because if you keep going straight, you have your Bayfront, you have Frontier Park. I mean, it's frontier breaks from Eighth to Sixth. And I, I do think that that as kind of a central location, I think that was very well thought out because I do think that that'll also open up, like you said, to get more people, and more of a natural transportation or bikes or, you know, even walking paths if they want. I, I do like that, and they do so much at Frontier with their flea markets and kids have soccer games and stuff like that. And again, that, that gets to be a very congested area. So like I said, I think overall the plan is nice. I just think there's a little more getting everybody on board. And I think that the safety aspect might be that push that maybe they kind of need.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you. So we'll present tomorrow to council.
Okay.
And then circle back. Sounds good, okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
It's a good presentation, but-
I'm still here.
Yeah, I've got to run.
Okay, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Item ten, planning and neighborhood resources updates.
Yeah, so I, I actually was going to just kind of open this up if I could, maybe a little bit less formal, just maybe I, I could answer some questions you may have. I just sent you the, I sent you the, my gosh, the analysis, the, I'm blanking on the term. Help me out, Jake, on the, the analysis that Michael Baker is going to do. I sent you the scope. Yes, the character analysis.
There you go.
Thank you, came to me. So I sent you the scope for that, and I mentioned that the consultants would come, I believe in December, I think it was December, what is your next meeting, eleventh? No, seventeenth, maybe? And to do a kickoff presentation. I didn't know if you had any questions on that exactly. If you had questions about the Parks and Rec Plan? I just sort of wanted to open about the Planning Department. I mean, just in general, if you had questions, I know you've sent some emails out recently. I just thought it'd be a little bit more informal if you had specific questions or concerns or something that we could address here today. I'm sure, you're smiling, Colin, like you have lots of them, but you know-
I'm going to bite my tongue.
I mean, based on, you know, Twelve Street, I, I really think we need to get things in the right order, you know? This is a great starting point and presentation of information regarding the scope of what they want to, of where they work and where they're headed, you know? That, that's the way Twelve Street should have started.
I don't know, you know, as you know, I came into this, sort of inherited this, but I'm, I'm not sure, do you, does anyone know historically sort of what happened with Twelve Street and that PennDOT did all these improvements?
Yeah.
And then I know this, this plan was received several years ago. I mean, it was, I think it was-
The grant?
The grant. The grant was received, I don't know if it was 2022, maybe? So-
Yeah.
I don't know the timing exactly. Of course, it's a PennDOT road.
Right.
But yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I know that you had concerns that we were only looking at a segment of Twelve Street and not all of the Twelve Street corridor, which is a valid point. So, yeah, and I, I don't know about the, how, what, with the timing, with the county, with the state. I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I certainly don't mean that as a criticism of you.
No, no, I know, I know that, I know that.
I mean, it's, I had a long-time feeling that the city's very good at chasing grants without having an overall vision of how the grant fits into broader development.
I, I'll go a step further in saying, you know, I agree completely, yeah, the vision is lacking, but I don't even think we have the awareness and understanding. We have a, as I learned this weekend, a Director of Economic Development who oversees code enforcement for some reason, which is not what Article One, Section seventeen oh seven says. It's supposed to fall under planning. We also don't have any way to track code enforcement. We have no way to hold the, you know, accountable what these issues are to understand them. I mean, I've asked, you know, at times, and, and what it comes down to is we have people who are willing to try and fix this stuff, but they're hamstrung by either, you know, administrative issues or just, you know, a reluctance to share information. And so I just don't know how we can expect anyone to actually do their job effectively and as, you know, needed if we, we continue operating, seeing things operate the way they're going. But I'll shut up because I know we've been here a while. To say I appreciate all that y'all do.
Well, I was going to say two things. In terms of transparency, at least at the planning level. And, and I want to mention another project that we're looking at, not project, but something that we're looking into is that we are in the process of, we've been talking about this for a while, creating a dashboard for each planning neighborhood. So as you see in that plan, it talks about demographics, it talks about rental, talks about what other things were in there, primarily age, demographics, rental, homeownership. But we, we're putting, we're pooling all of the information that we can right now in terms of, I mean, anything from even bus routes, projects that are going on in that area, investment, crime data, homeownership, rental. I'd like to show code enforcement data. We don't have to show point-specific, but we can show how many violations, vacancy, what, what properties are on the, on the blighted property list, all of those things to be able to show transparency. And we're doing that right now in the Lighthouse-Balaski neighborhood, which incorporates the Wayne Health and Equity District. So we're working very closely with that group and we're hoping, hoping that it will be, it will set some kind of precedent to be able to have more transparency.
Yeah, I, I hope so. I mean, the answer I get from the administration is file a right-to-know request.
Yeah.
I've, in the role of, you know, Planning Commission member, their answer has been file a right-to-know request, to which they don't give you the information. So it's just, it's a general question.
This map here is, is great, and she, Heather referred to this. We should have a map like this for the entire city. Let me just give you one example. Last week I was out with Public Works, with LeAnn and Bill Hayden, looking at Tenth and Peach for, for various reasons. But Twelfth, Tenth, Tenth and State right now is, what I've heard is about a hundred million dollars of investment going on in that particular intersection. There are other things that are, obviously, there are other things on even Peach, on Ninth that we should be looking at comprehensively. And also, a whole lot of housing, a whole lot of people coming into our city with varying needs. And so the Planning Department would like to do a kind of a study in that section because there's going to be great impacts to our parking, to all sorts of, you know, even, even in the, in terms of standards and how we're looking at that. And so, yeah, there, there are things that we should be doing kind of holistically that I think need to take priority there. But I don't know if you have other questions for me in regards to some of the projects that I've mentioned to you along the way? Things are coming together for the Parks and Rec Plan. We have three interviews tomorrow.
Awesome.
And we'll hopefully have a consultant under contract within a week or so. Twelve Streets closing up, Safe Streets is halfway complete. We've had challenges to some engagement, and we're going to pivot a bit. We'd really like to engage more with the Black community, which has been a bit more, which has been a little difficult, and we're going to try a different tactic. But we want to make sure that the Black community has a piece and a voice in this project, considering that, that, that Black people are disproportionately affected by, especially pedestrian crashes than white people. And so we want to make sure that those voices are heard and part of the process. So please spread the word that we are still very much in part, very much receiving public comment, and we are happy to come out and give a presentation to whomever.
What are you going to do differently to engage with the Black community?
We've talked about, we had a, a community meeting last week at ECAT, which we hope to have more people at that meeting. And we, we, we only had a few of the same people that come typically, which is great. I mean, but we, you know, the whole point was to have-
Wider engagement.
Yeah. We are, we're going to talk about possibly going to some churches and presenting to some of the, you know, religious institutions.
Have you thought about, you have all of your feedback online? They can go online and do feedback? Do you have a QR code where they can get it? I would do a lot of these schools and stuff, again, these are the neighborhoods, try passing out flyers at the school and letting them, did you do that?
We did, we did a thousand, Daryl Craig and Blue Coats passed out a thousand flyers. He went to the polling. So, yeah, I think, I think, you know, we ask a lot of our community each project. And we, we, we sense, I think we've been feeling this for a while, that our community is tired of surveying, tired of story maps, and we need, we need their input. But we're doing things like aligning our messaging with United Way, which is doing the safer routes to schools. We're coming together, working together, so that we're not messaging, you know, Vision Zero here and safer walking routes to school here. We're, we're hopefully campaigning on the same platform so that the, the community's not confused and we can do two at once, right? So we are going into the schools. We have five community schools throughout the next month and a half that we're going to be attending those kind of focus groups. We've already done McKinley- already done McKinley, we did their trunk-or-treat, and so we, we, we've had at least over 10 to 12 different engagement points, but yeah, we, we are, we, we definitely would like to, to overcome some of those challenges with this project a little bit more, because of the importance of it, and also the inequity of it.
Right.
We know that so much has been, so much of the, the traditionally Black neighborhoods have been overlooked in terms of infrastructure repairs, maintenance.
Okay.
So, yes, if you have other ideas, I've listened, well, and I, I've listened to, you know, at our last meeting, there was Art Leopold who was there, who was very active in the community, and we talked a little bit about some of, some of the other ways that maybe we can pivot, and then, of course, we have a community liaison, liaison, Darryl Craig, who is giving us some, some ideas and trying to make connections for us, but it's important to this project, very, very much of importance to this project specifically, because of the, because of the, the difference, and the, and the difference of impact, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we've been here a long time.
Yeah, I've got to get to St. James in five minutes.
We've been here a long time, no.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all-
Aye.
For a long, productive meeting.
Yeah, Colin was there.